Stuff got moved and now I can't find it. Yes, okay.
Okay, it's six o'clock. Started, I believe. Laura is trying to get on the video as well, or at least on the call. Wait another minute and we'll start. I don't see Laura yet, but I think she's trying to tune in. I know Steve is gonna be a little bit late, so we might as well get started. Call a meeting to order. So we can corporate school board meeting to order at 6:02. We're gonna have a lot on our agenda tonight, so we're gonna skip with some of the other opening things, such as committee reports unless somebody has something extenuating that they want to share. But otherwise, I think we can either, and I'll look to Adam for this, go right to the public hearing. Yep, okay, so let's go right to that. Do we have to take a motion to go into public hearing? Okay, now maintain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Stephanie, anybody for a second?
I'll second. This is George.
Yeah, second by George. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Dave? Yes, all right, very nice symbolism. Amy?
ACS.
Okay, Stephanie?
Grund yes.
George?
Laura is yes.
And Gronster, yes, and I'm sure when Laura joins in, she can vote at that point. Okay, so it's 5:04 going to the public meeting, public hearing rather, to accept a donation from the Orlando Jameson Trust, helps support the Ethics Forum hype program. Anything else we need to do to accept that?
Just ask if anyone from the public wants to provide comment.
Okay, does anybody from the public like to provide comment? I don't see any. So seeing no comments, then I assume we can move right to motioning to accept the donation. Is that the right next step, Adam?
Close the public hearing and then part of the consent agenda will be to accept the funds. So just a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So I'll take a motion from someone to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, first by Amy, anybody second?
I'll second.
George seconds. Okay, roll call. Dave? Ten yes, I think is what you said. Okay. Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund yes.
George?
Laura is yes.
I believe Laura is on the phone. If so, you can vote to come out of public hearing. Okay, well, absent that, Gronster, yes, so 5:00 votes to come out of public hearing. All right, brings us to the first public input. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to? Find some input. I don't see anything in the Q and A section, so we'll just move right along since I'm sure we'll have public input later on. All right, let's go right over to the consent agenda approval. So everybody should have had the opportunity to go through the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
George, do I have a second?
Second.
It's second from Amy. We'll do any discussion?
Yes, I actually have some questions.
Okay, is there anything that you want to pull from the consent agenda or you just want to ask some?
Actually, it's more about the P card. I'd like to understand what controls we have in place to make sure that we do not have spending that should not occur and who is controlling the, those, putting those controls in place, who's over watching them, that sort of thing.
Okay, I believe that. I thought she was just on the line. I missed, can't see her in my view.
I'm here.
Oh, you are, okay.
Happy to respond.
There you are, Michelle, yeah. Do you want to answer any of those questions?
Yep. Oftentimes, a P card, a procurement card, is thought of as similar to a credit card and it's actually very different. The P card itself comes with a lot of supports that allow you to manage how it's utilized and put controls in place. We have a draft procedure manual that'll include, you know, folks that as they're assigned a card will have to agree to certain guidelines regarding its use. You can easily shut the card off if somebody is not following those guidelines without affecting any of the other cards used by individuals. And we also have a rollout program, so we wouldn't start by, you know, assigning a lot of cards initially to folks. We would start by, with a very thought process in terms of how we reduce the number of credit accounts that we have with vendors and take advantage of the P card process and the use of that to not only streamline our orders and our reimbursement, because, you know, as we use that process, we'd be paying one vendor instead of several, but then also the volume of activity that we have on that card has the added benefit of providing a rebate earning for us, so it could generate a little bit of income through the use of that process too.
Okay, so are we?
I'm sorry.
No, that's good. So we could, so is that gonna eliminate the use of the PO process in some ways?
Oh, absolutely not. The PO process is, is going to absolutely stay in place. People still have to have authorization prior to the use of the card. All this does is it, it allows us to use that card as a mechanism to expedite the process. And also, it will use that when individuals are ordering things from companies that require a credit card be used. So a good example might be like Amazon. And right now, people don't have corporate, don't have corporate cards, so then we end up in a situation that the purchase is made by the individual, so it gets shipped in the individual's name and we really want it to be a purchase that's made on behalf of the district and, you know, if something's returned, we don't have the credit coming back to the district as well.
Yeah, 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 I know that's been a problem in the past.
Absolutely. The use of the, the P card will allow for somebody to pay for an item by using that card, but they still need to go through the normal process of having the purchase authorized beforehand and ensuring that the budgetary dollars to cover it.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, didn't our treasurer go over the P card plan in detail and sign off on it as well?
Yes, we, Katie and CJ and I reviewed that. We had a presentation by the ASBO Illinois organization that manages the whole P card process and we, you know, peppered her with questions and CJ was very thoughtful and thorough in her approach and she has supported this.
Good, great. And then Tim, just a different question, the general assurances that we're signing off on? Can Adam or who, someone speak to the fact, are we sure that we're following all the assurances and processes we have in place? So make sure we're abiding by these assurances before we put our signature on this?
Yes, so we are and we've reviewed this carefully. Our auditors review this as well. Everybody reviews it, so yes, we are, we have to follow it and we will follow it and we have them.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Adam, for that quick answer. All right, anybody else have any other comments or concerns on the consent agenda?
I just have a quick follow-up to Stephanie's question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah, um, I don't think Sarbanes-Oxley applies here, but during audit, is there a test of the internal controls at all? Or does, like, what's, can you kind of walk me through that a little bit, Adam, or Michelle?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Yes, our internal controls are tested as part of the audit every year and they poll a random number of purchases and follow them from start to finish to make sure that the internal controls policies have been followed. And then if we ever have a concern about fraud or some other misuse, they'll go even deeper into something and verify our controls. So it's, it's part of their annual audit process.
And who does your audit, Adam? Is it Melantin Heath?
No, right now it's Plodzik and every
Plodzik, okay.
Every three or six years, we rotate and go out to RFP and switch.
Okay.
Plodzik has been here and they're, they're in their last three year contract with us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. So we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, so we'll do a roll call for approval. Dave? Okay, I believe you mouthed yes, so we'll take that. Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund yes.
George?
Laura is yes.
Laura, if you can hear us and respond. Doesn't look like that. Gronster, yes, so this has been approved, 5-0. Oh, there's Laura, I think.
Taylor, yes.
Okay, oh, thank you, Laura. Okay, so 6-0 approval. All right. Well, now we are here for, or we're at the point where lots of people are listening, tuning in for the reopening plan discussion. So I'll turn it over to Adam and I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I first start by thanking the board members for their participation in, in many of the meetings this summer. Also was very happy to receive an extensive amount of written questions from our board members ahead of time that we were able to work through and answer and then publish for the, for the, for the world to see, which is very helpful. And thank you to our teaching staff and our building support staff who've engaged with us through the PPC process and just in general through the planning part all throughout the summer. Thank you to our administrators who have been working 24/7 lately to make this plan a reality. It is not easy to completely upset the, the apple cart and start over, but our administrative team has done just that. And thank you to our students who provided feedback and input along the way as well as their parents. And so I feel very proud to be here tonight talking about our reopening. I feel strongly that we've got a solid plan. We have numbers that match up between our teachers and our students who want to be in person and remote, which was our first act of faith that we had this summer. That's worked out extremely well and I'm happy to report that well over 70% of our staff are planning to be in person for the first segment and that matches our in-person numbers for students as well. And our, our building administrators have worked with those numbers to make a really solid plan that we're very proud of and that we should be very proud of because you think about it, everybody gets to do what they feel comfortable doing and that's in this time of crisis, a very important thing. So our first act of faith is that the numbers will work out. Our second act of faith is around the numbers we need on the financial side to make the plan work. And so And so a large part of the discussion this evening is around two of the board's primary tasks as a school board. Policy, which you just passed, and budget, which is what we need to talk about. One new piece of information for the board this evening that I think is very important is that we've learned just recently that through special permission from the Department of Education, we are able to ask to be able to use our unassigned fund balance from last year without requiring a special meeting to fund those requests that we have in the short term. That's a very big thing, because it gives us the ability to move forward if the board approves it and if the DOE allows it with those purchases that we need right now to start our school year that before was going to be a little bit beyond an act of faith is going to be a more of a prayer that we would have voter support when the time came, knowing that we may not even know how the voters decide until late into the fall and even potentially early winter, which is problematic. And so we're going to be discussing that this evening and making a recommendation that we ask the board for permission to use our unassigned fund balance to fund the things that we need to make this school year work. I should note that with any time we provide a budget to our public or to our school board, that it's a forecast, and it's a forecast on the high end, because we cannot go back and get extra money from people. We have to spend within our means. And so all of our budgetary requests are conservative, meaning they are on the high side. And as always, we're going to spend extremely wisely, as we always do, as evidenced by the by our unassigned fund balance that we're using to do just that. And so I want to reassure the public that while we put all the things that we think we need, we're going to be extremely judicious in our use of taxpayer funds to fund our school year. And we're hoping that what we need will end up being much lower than what we've requested. In addition to that, you should know that the Amherst School Board has made a decision to make that petition to the DOE to use their unassigned fund balance to fund their short-term needs. And they've decided to hold off on the long-term HVAC upgrades until we get a little further down the road with our JFAK process, meaning the Amherst School Board is not asking the Superior Court to grant a special meeting. For right now, they're holding. And so that might influence the Sohegan School Board's decision as well. And I wanted to speak about that from the beginning, because the Amherst Board helped me, helped my thoughts evolve. I realized that a lot of my concern was how are we going to have the funds to run this school year? Now that we have a valid way of getting those funds through the use of last year's unassigned fund balance, I don't feel as much pressure to even think about the long-term HVAC needs as I did before. And part of that is because I know we have a good plan for this school year. Thanks to Roger and his facilities team. Thanks to Michelle for her and her budgetary work. So it's my recommendation tonight that, in two parts, that after the board validates the requests, you should do that. You should go through that with a fine-tooth comb, as I know you have. After you validate those requests, it's going to be my recommendation that, number one, we request permission from the DOE to fund our purchases this year from the unassigned fund balance from last year. And two, that we hold off on asking the Superior Court for a special meeting and coordinate with the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee and determine if there's still a need for that a little bit further down the road. So those are my opening comments. We could talk about the reopening plan for the next seven hours, but I'm going to trust that our board has been heavily engaged. And I know you have, because some of you served on the task force. Others of you were at every task force meeting and still others asked well over 100 questions of us leading up to this meeting. So I feel pretty confident that the board is well read on this plan. And we're happy to take any questions that you have as an administration. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Okay, so let's get into any questions that anybody has on what Adam has been talking about. Anybody have any at this point?
I do.
Okay, I saw Dave's hand first, so I'll go to Dave, then to Stephanie. Dave, you're still on mute. Still on mute. There you go. Oh, cannot hear you, though. Oh, there's, there's no audio coming through. If you can maybe chat out your question and then you can read it out and answer. In the meantime, let me go to Stephanie. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay. Couple of questions. I animated a mention about discussions with PPC. And I'm hoping that we get to hear what those discussions were or we get to understand what changes are being made to any PPC policies. So we're fully informed, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's a non-public session or what that is.
No, it's not, I'm happy to speak to that. So we, as, as the board certainly knows, Sohegan High School is, as far as I know, the only public high school in the state without an organized workforce. And so our PPC meeting process is one that follows a different set of rules than normal. I'm happy to speak to that. So our PPC met last week and our faculty and support staff talked through their concerns, their issues around safety, around assignments, around workforce, about all of those things. And I, I don't know that there's any recommended changes to any of the PPC policies at this point in time that are being, that are being asked of us. Mike Berry, as principal, has met with them on a couple of other occasions, I believe, this week. But really, this was, the PPC meetings were in large measure about them having a chance to work through their issues on behalf of their teachers and support staff and make sure that they've had confidence in our plans. And I can't speak for them, but I believe we were able to address their concerns and that they're feeling good about where we're at. But if anyone from PPC is is on, feel free to correct my representation of our meetings. But again, I don't know, I don't believe, and I don't have any with me. So I can say there's not any recommended changes to PPC policies this evening.
I can add to that if you want.
Oh, Steve's here, perfect.
Yes, I snuck in when no one was looking. Yeah, the, the, mostly the staff had questions about the reopening plan. So, and they fit into broadly six areas. What does a full-time equivalent look like when people are going to be asked to all sorts of things that aren't their normal job? Will there be a chance, or is there a plan to assure equity of workload for all staff? What will happen to support staff if we close for a prolonged period in terms of their viability of their long-term employment? Equity again, or I wrote it down wrong and it was something else and I forget. What would happen to sick leave for people who are out for a prolonged period with COVID-19? And what about career growth? Because career growth, the final step in career growth was put off at the end of last year. So there's a, there's a makeup process in place to have it happen early this year. So, and mostly it was just around getting more comfort for the PPC members who they could then communicate with the rest of the staff. And they did that, I think they had a meeting Monday morning. Mike may have been there, or he may not have been, I don't know. But so far, the relationship with PPC has been very good. I mean, they, they want to make this work. They just want to make sure that we're not planning on, on putting them in chains and making them grow faster so the captain can water ski.
Yeah, I'm sure. Thank you. Tim, I do have other questions. Do you want me to keep going or do you want to?
Can you hold off just in case somebody else has the same question? I will circle back to you, though. So in the meantime, I do have Dave's question, which is a good question that also occurred to me as well when Adam was talking. And that is, was any of the project money that we approved in June from the unassigned fund balance executed? And if so, what was the amount? And I have a similar question, because obviously, if you're asking for us to utilize the monies in the unassigned fund balance, that would mean that there's some there. And I thought that we had allocated a majority of that minus some small amount, which probably wouldn't take us very far. But it sounds like maybe we're not executing on all of that. So if you guys, either Michelle or Adam, and probably Michelle, can give us some insight on that, that'd be great. And then I'll go to Amy and then Stephanie.
Before, Michelle.
So I'm happy to respond to that. The unassigned fund balance at the end of last fiscal year completed at $417,329. We did execute a fair amount of the year-end items. And I'm pulling up that document now. I can certainly share that. So of the two $275,000 that was approved, $268,000 and change was utilized towards projects. So this unreserved fund balance that, the 417, is after those projects were supported.
So we have beyond the $268,000 that was allocated to, to the projects, we have another $417,000?
A portion of the unreserved fund balance comes from revenue.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thanks for that reminder. Okay, so it's not as dire as I had anticipated. Amy is next.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, Michelle, I saw that you sent a document to all of us. I'm wondering if you can share that and walk us through what the expenditures are that are being proposed. And then I had another question, but I can wait till we go around, Tim, if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great, in fairness. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, are folks able to see the additional resource request document?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just a summary of the information regarding COVID preparedness. So one of the items was the resource request list. And I'll open that up in just a minute. But this summarizes those resources into different categories. So 9,900 of PPE was requested. HVAC, which is primarily filters, 16,800. Staffing request, 245,000, primarily additional custodial support. Some equipment and furniture requests, and then cleaning supplies of 125,000 to get to the total list of 418,022. The full list is here. It reduces just a little bit. So this provides a list of all of the items, the total quantity that is projected for the year and detailed description regarding those items. And then the status of what has been ordered to date. So these items here, this is the PPE up to, including the booties for shoes, so that's 9,944. And then this is the ventilation going from, in most cases, a MERV eight to a MERV 11 or 13, 616,800 for that. There's also a link in the summary document to the HVAC plan that we have been reviewed previously, but I'll share that in a minute as well. So those numbers are here, because they are listed as part of the short-term and long-term HVAC requirements that would be proposed to be bonded due to the extent of those cost items. Additional custodial help for FTEs projected at 63,542 each, which would include wages and benefits. That total cost is 245,168. Then we get into additional furniture and equipment, outdoor tents, Lexi glass dividers, folding tables and chairs, radios to increase communication for folks that may be both outside the building and in the building. And then cleaning supplies and storage supplies. But two storage trailers, two UV robots, one for the main building and one for the annex. HIPAA filter systems for rooms that, to improve air quality and circulation in the abandoned fire room. Alcohol wipes to provide for folks that can wipe down surfaces as they're entering or exiting, you know, using their workspace. Social distancing stickers and floor signs, cleaning supplies as we increase our cleaning efforts. And then hand washing stations for outdoor use, they're single stations. So those items total 418,022. The unassigned fund balance, as I had mentioned, was 417,329. So you're, you're just shy of the unassigned fund balance, but some of these numbers could probably, you know, be tweaked a little bit or come down a little bit as our need, as, as we actually make some of these purchases. The PPE items have, we've moved forward with those orders to support the opening of school. Some of these other items have been put on hold pending discussion with the board. I'm happy to go through the rest of this document if you would like or to stop there for now to talk about the resource list.
I think that was first very helpful. I appreciate the added insight there, Michelle. Amy, did you have, related to your initial question, was that where you wanted to get to?
Yeah, I did want to go through the HVAC, but I don't know if other people have questions on this particular first section. So I don't know what makes the most sense in terms of ordering questions.
Yeah, so that's a good point. So I would like to stick to this only because, you know, we just looked at the document. Stephanie, do your questions have anything to do with those items or?
Two of my questions have to do with those items.
Okay, great. So then why don't you start us off?
Sure. So the custodial help is a very large number. I know we definitely need it, I'm not saying we don't. How are we on staffing today? Are we able to open school safely at this point? Or do we have enough help to, to be able to clean at night? That's one of my questions. And the other question is just about the UV robots. So I'll, I'll ask that after.
Who would like to take that?
Roger. Roger Preston, would you speak to that?
Hi, everyone. I can speak to the staffing. Currently, right now, off of Hilliard's audit that we did, we're actually down four custodians. We're currently cleaning about 24,000, 25,000 square feet per custodian each night. We'd like to lower that frequency to about 13,000, 15,000. The additional staffing would would also be on during the day to just help support our day custodian as well. He's already tied up with calls and moving around, disinfecting. We would like an additional custodian for the day to support him as well. So we're looking for one on the day and it would add three other at night.
How are we able to start school right now? Are we comfortable?
We're, things are no different than they were at last school year. Again, where each custodian is cleaning about 25,000 square feet of building space itself. Typically, 25,000 square feet is, is kind of an adequate clean. Moving down to about 14,000 provides a better result for us. Moving under 10,000, around 8,000, is kind of a hospital-grade clean. So I would say we're no different than we were last year. But the additional support would certainly help.
Okay, yep. I agree, no doubt. Okay, the UV robot, so two questions. One, can you explain a little bit? One, can you explain a little bit how it works? Does it clean the top surfaces and bottom surfaces of things? Because I'm just thinking like desks and chairs kids touch every place. Does that, how does that really work? And there's a lease cost. What's the purchase cost? Is, I'm just trying to figure out, does it make sense? Do we want to lease it only? What's, I'm sure you've looked at the numbers.
So I could talk a little bit about how the robot functions, and then I'll pass it over to Michelle to talk about just purchasing. So it's a UV robot. It's ultraviolet robot. It's about seven feet tall. It's controlled by an iPad. When, if we were to purchase it, the company will come in and actually program the robot to the entire building map the way each classroom is actually laid out. If classrooms are moved during the day, it will alter the robot's route a little bit. It's not that it's not able to travel through the room, but it just alters the way that it is from the original design of mapping the building with the company. So pretty much a robot will be let into a room. A thousand-square-foot room can be cleaned up to eight to 10 minutes. Individuals cannot be in the room with the robot because the UV light is just harsh to the skin. Typically, you're just standing behind the glass of the door if needed. The rooms do need to be wiped down before the robot enters. Just the robot does disinfect, but it does not clean. It does not remove smudges or fingerprints. So wiping down the room will definitely have to happen before entering. And also, all of the papers and everything that's on the surfaces of desks also should be put away at the end of the day as well. If there's a piece of paper that is over a desk, obviously, that light is only hitting the top of the paper, and it's not hitting anything underneath it. That's one of the good things about this version of the robot being automatic. The old-style robots, typically, you would just set it into the room, and it was fixed in the room. You left it in there for eight minutes, and then you went back and get it. You get back to remove the robot. This robot will actually, when it's allowed into the room, move itself through the room on its own because as light casts, we get shadows on one side. So we want to make sure that that robot is traveling around to the other side so that we're getting as much of a surface as we can. The robots we're proposing come with a five-year lease, and all of the batteries, it's, I'm sorry, the batteries and the bulbs will be included in the five-year lease if they are to replace them. They come with four batteries each. The cost of one battery is $1,428 to replace. The robot also has eight lamps that comes with it, which is the actual UV light. Those are $300 apiece. The lamp life is 12,000 hours. So they tell us that with 12,000, we'll get 12,000 hours worth of service out of the light that comes with the robot. And the batteries will actually run for 1,000 full cycles, just fully drained. But like I said, if we were to lease it, the bulbs and the batteries are included in that cost as well. And then I just want to, one last point is it's just, it's actually a specific UV light. It's UVC is what it's called. And it has a specific wavelength of 524 nanometers, which we've been told from the company is right in tune to where it needs to be to fight the virus. And then as far as the financials, lease versus purchase, I'll turn that over to Michelle.
Thanks, Roger. So what we have in here is a five-year lease agreement. And there would also be an anticipated buyout of 9.9% of the purchase price of the product after that five-year period. We have a quote that covers multiple units. So right here in the worksheet, I show a price of 131,550 per unit. That's including a multi-purchase discount. So taking that discount out is about 138,000, almost 139,000 per unit for purchase.
And we'd have to buy the bulbs and batteries and all that stuff ourselves if we purchased them, right?
The lease agreement includes.
Includes that. Okay. All right. I think those are the questions I had just on that list.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. You want to circle back to Amy? Just tell them you're ready.
All right. Yeah, I wanted to ask you to delve deeper, Michelle, into the HVAC, the immediate, short-term, and long-term needs. And I do have updated information for the, and how that relates to J-FAC. But I don't know if you want to share your screen with that first.
So here's the screen with the report. I will actually, for Roger to walk through all of the different items on here in the short and long-term categorization.
Thanks, Michelle. So what we have on here, and I'll go through them, is we have seven options, and we developed the same seven options per building. And the very first option is just to upgrade the control system, which we're actually in the middle of at South Hegan. We're updating the front end. We're changing 41 UV controllers. We're updating 41 UV controllers, 75 VAV controllers, and the boiler room controller. That is what we're currently working on right now. This 213 for a short-term plan that we're asking for is going to just take this control system a little bit deeper and a little bit further into our annex building and our main building. What we're looking to add is we want to pull in the 13 rooftop units between both buildings, six on the main building and seven on the annex, integrate them into the control system. And we also want to pick up the 24-unit ventilators that we have inside of the annex building. While we've been going through this control system for the high school, we have identified, I will say, some issues within the building with the existing system. The building was put in in 1992, and we've had many years of lack of maintenance that I think all of us are aware of. We have many fan motors, dampers, and actuators that are actually gone in our existing system. So as our control company has been going through, I've asked them to do an audit on all of our units and actually give pricing on all of our units. So not only are we looking to add the 13 rooftop units and the 24-unit ventilator controllers, we're also looking to spend $72,000 to update these, actually repair these existing units that we're working on right now. That is number, item number one. Item number two is we're just looking to upgrade our existing filters. Typically, a filter, if a building has them, is a MERV eight filter. We're looking to upgrade them to MERV elevens and MERV thirteens. MERV eleven, MERV eleven and a MERV thirteen, it's really just a thicker filter that's going to grab more particulates out of the air and actually just provide a better environment for us. With that thicker filter, though, we have to use caution to make sure that our unit ventilators and our rooftop units are able to handle them. We've confirmed with our manufacturers of our units, and our unit ventilators are able to take MERV elevens, and our rooftop units are able to take the MERV thirteens. We're looking at increasing that frequency. A typical frequency for MERV eights are going to be four times a year as far as changing them out. Because it's a thicker filter and more of a particulates are going to be grabbed by that filter, we're looking to change that frequency up to eight times per year. Obviously, this is something that we're going to need to monitor to make sure that we're not decreasing the airflow in the building. All of these plans are about increasing airflow, either opening windows or allowing dampers. We just want to make sure that if we do make changes to the building, that it's not actually working against us. Item three, we're just looking at full rooftop unit replacements at both the high school main building and the annex main building. These rooftop replacements would include UV lights and also include the MERV thirteen filters. I will say that with the South Hegan 2.0 plan is that these rooftop units were always proposed to have UV lighting and more MERV thirteen filters. Engineers had already designed it that way off of superintendent's input and mine as well. Item number four, it's just, we were looking at, what's it going to take to grab, install UV lighting in our existing unit ventilators right now? We know with South Hegan 2.0 or a new building design that typically unit ventilators are not going to be installed in there. We wanted to look at the option, but we did find that it just doesn't make much sense for maybe taking out these components when South Hegan 2.0 actually takes off. Item number five, bipolar ionization. People have talked really great things about it, but failure rate is ozone issues and harmful to humans. So we didn't feel that it was actually appropriate to be in a school environment. HEPA filter carts, typically, these are going to be for areas that do not have any ventilation whatsoever. But we did recently, as new information comes out each day, we actually heard that having these HEPA carts inside a bandroom or choir rooms is really a good benefit for the students in those areas. So that's why we have two proposed, as Michelle mentioned, on the other spreadsheet. And then item number seven is it's just direct UV lights. It was a discussion. It's new technology that's out there. There is pricing here for it, but really, we don't have enough information on it to say yay or nay to it. But again, UV lights would have to be on after hours. So you might buy, if we were to go with this, you drive by South Hegan in the middle of the night, and it might look like a Christmas tree. So we don't have enough information on this. A lot of these items, yes, we could have left it off the spreadsheet, but we did want to show that we did do our due diligence and go through these items. And that's pretty much the seven options, if anybody does have any questions.
So Roger, can you just relate this spreadsheet to the other spreadsheet so I can understand exactly what is being proposed for short-term and what is being proposed for long-term?
So for short-term on this spreadsheet, it is items number one and two.
Okay. All right, so that's what you're looking to do now. And what is the timeline for doing that? Because obviously, we have, we'll be having students and staff in the building soon.
So timeline for this, we're trying to push as soon as possible. Item number two, we're just waiting, we've ordered the first round of filters. We're waiting to receive them, and we're able to install them without any impact to the building whatsoever. It can either be done at night or early morning. Filters, filters are really not the issue. Our controls actually is in process right now with South Hegan as far as the first phase of this. So we would have to work on, on doing this with students back. We'd have to work into phasing as far as probably just moving to after-hours and weekends. We just don't want to do anything that's going to impact education during the day.
So I know it's not perfect, but how, how do you feel the air quality will be after these short-term fixes are done? How do we feel about the building in terms of our students and staff being there?
For me, from what I have been seeing and from what we're proposing, I look at it as, it's almost like a recommissioning has happened on the entire, on the entire building. I will say, if both section goes, it would be a recommissioning on the main building and the annex building. Just because there's portions of it in this phase, too, that I'm looking at to pick up. But what we've done so far is, if we can pick up all of the repairs and with the new control system, it's going to be really night and day compared to where we were.
Okay, because we have heard, you know, commonly that the temperature, temperatures in different classrooms and areas are very variable, I guess, to say it nicely. And it definitely impacts learning and teaching. So you believe that this will correct those issues for the short-term anyway?
Without a doubt. I mean, overheating issues, there's heat valves that have failed so that they're just not shutting off. So the rooms are just constantly heating, heating, heating to the point where the individual, and not to blame, they're just shutting the unit off, which prevents us from getting fresh air in. But there's the point where if it's 100 degrees in the room, or you want fresh air, I mean, so I can see where units are being shut off. It's just, it's, it's not only is, if this is approved and when it's done, it's going to be the continual preventative maintenance to always go back to these units and to make, to assure that they're running properly. The wonderful thing about the control system is, is we're going to be able to see into these units without physically being at the unit. So right now, the way it is, is you don't know if a damper isn't working until we open up that unit and we pull, and we see, oh, the linkage is off. No wonder why the damper isn't working. Our control system will allow us to see that sitting in a basement.
So just to further clarify, my understanding is that the short-term dollars needed either are covered from what we approved at our meeting in June, I think, and/or included in this unassigned fund balance that we now do not have to have a special meeting in order to utilize. So is that right? So we're covered for the short-term work that we want to do?
If I could jump in and respond to that. So on the summary sheet, we have what we would call our immediate needs. And the immediate needs for HVAC include some of the filter replacements, and that's 16,800. But everything that is on the HVAC plan, both the short-term 230,000 and the long-term 7 million, would be contemplated as part of a bond at this point in time. So it's not included in the, the short-term portion of the HVAC plan is not part of the 418,000.
Okay, so we can't do the 236 right now. We have to wait until we make a larger decision?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's helpful.
Can I add a couple of things? If I could jump in for a couple. So first, if possible, we'll be able to free up funding as we get going. You save money during the school year. That's, that's something that we can keep in the back of my minds. But I want to underscore what Roger and Michelle have done over the summer around making our existing systems more workable and preparing them to be better. So this is not fun information to share, but some of our systems were in very poor shape and have now been maintained for years to wit. This is what one of our filters look like inside of one of our HVAC systems. And this might be a little scary to some folks, and it should be because that's terrible. It's completely unacceptable. And so I just want to reassure folks that Roger and his team are going through this with a fine-tooth comb because of how important this is. And we're going to make sure that we get it exactly where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Did anybody have another question? Were you continuing, Amy?
I don't know if there's questions on the short-term, but I know that the long-term, we'll have to have a more in-depth conversation about how that functions. So I don't want to capitalize all the airtime. But if folks are ready to go into the long-term, then great. But if not, I'll be quiet.
Well, so that's a great question to me. And I'll kind of shoot this back over to Adam. The long-term is further out, and therefore, as Michelle mentioned, this is more of a bond issue. So I don't know if that's something that is on the docket to talk about this evening, or are we only talking about really short-term things that we can address with the unassigned fund balance? You know, so we can move that forward.
Yeah, so it's a board decision, but my recommendation is that we pause the long-term HVAC discussion, let the JFAC tackle that first, give them more time to do that, and come back and make recommendations to both Emerson, Sohigan, if need be, based on the J-FAC recommendations. That's, but that's just my, this board can do what they want, certainly, but that's my recommendation.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I see Dave's hand up. Go ahead, Dave.
I hope this is working now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you have audio. All right, good job.
Thank you. When will we be able to get a peek at a long-term, not a long-term plan, but the long-term plan? Or at least whether it's 7,000, or 5,000, or 10,000, Adam? Are we going to get refinements to this over the course of time? And when do you think we'll be able to receive that? We have to go to a bond issue. We have to be prepared for that fairly quickly.
Sure, so I think I'd prefer to let Amy speak to that, actually, as chair of the JFAC, if you're comfortable.
Yeah, sure. So we were supposed to have our JFAC meeting tonight, but we moved it in deference to this meeting. So we are meeting next Thursday. And there are, for Sohigan, there is a subcommittee that is looking at Sohigan 2.0 and looking to prioritize the work that is, that is in that plan that we would look to recommend to the Sohigan Board to complete. So HVAC was, not surprisingly, I haven't seen their recommendations yet. I I haven't seen their their recommendations yet and maybe Stephanie can chime in because she's on that subcommittee. But I'm pretty sure that was the number one priority. She's nodding her head. So that work is continuing, but I think our committee knows that we are potentially looking as a board to pull that out possibly and look at bonding that those costs. So and then the work of that subcommittee would further look to prioritize other possible improvements to the building. And I know that Mike has been asked to take a look into that and delve a little bit deeper to provide some feedback to the subcommittee and Lance, who is from LaValle and Brezinger, who is doing the the master plan for us. So I know that's on Mike's docket to take a look at. So once all of that work is done and once the Amherst School Board has been presented with also possible recommendations for the Amherst School School District, we really need to take a look at all of the work that is being proposed and map it out over the long term and set priorities and determine what the tax impact would be over the long term. So it really fits into a larger puzzle. That being said, if we are considering pulling out the HVAC from Sohegan 2.0 in terms of what joint facilities would be recommending and looking to do that separately here, I think that's really valuable information to pass along to joint facilities. So I know we're sort of, you know, there's a chicken and egg, but I would love to have the conversation here. If that is something that we would be consider would be we'd be considering. So does that help, Adam, or confuse things? Okay.
So Amy, you had your hand up prior to all that. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to kind of address your question during that or not.
Yeah, that was that was it.
Okay, great.
I'll lower my hand.
And then I have George and then back over to Dave. Go ahead, George.
Thanks, Ben. Two quick questions, one circling back with the UV robots. And I'm sure when this was researched, how comfortable are we as you're weighing their options, whether or not to purchase or lease the company itself as a going concern? Because obviously, if you purchase them and for some reason, you two or three years down the road, we're going to be scrambling to looking for someone to service these pretty expensive pieces of equipment as opposed to a lease. So can you can someone speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to. First of all, I'm still not 100% convinced that these robots are the way to go. I think there's a pretty good case for them. I think it makes a lot of sense. But we're still working to secure a demo and to feel that we're 100% confident in the company. So I still support the expenditure request being put in there and set aside. But until Michelle, Roger and I all feel confident that the technology will work, that the company will be there in the long term. We're not going to be leasing anything until that that time comes. Now, I will say that the salesman is a local Amherst resident and we feel good about that connection to that resident. But still, we need to feel very comfortable with the the company before we move forward. So good point.
Thank you, Adam. And just my last question is concerning the potential discussion regarding the HVAC units. And it's not only the expenditures related to these purchases, but it's also the ongoing maintenance going forward as well that the board would be committing to. So I guess from a run rate, do we have any idea of what that delta would be going forward? Because, you know, obviously costs increase every year. But being this equipment and talking about ramping up the maintenance, which I certainly agree it needs to be done, just so this board is aware, what are we looking at going forward?
Roger?
I I guess when we when we're talking maintenance, are we talking short term or are we talking long term?
Well, well, the ongoing maintenance related to these units, because now you're talking about, you know, we're going to swap out filters more frequently. You know, the assumption is this equipment is going to be a little bit more, I guess, for a lack of a better term, technical. So they will be more expensive to maintain. That's my assumption. So can you speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I don't get me the wrong way when I say this, but so I think there's going to be a complete change in maintenance in all districts in this new year, just because from from what I'm seeing around here is is we just need to create more frequencies. We need to have more eyes on units. From what I've seen that's happened in the past, we haven't had enough eyes on the units and we haven't been maintaining the units. And enough is kind of what leads us into the situation that we're in right now with such a big expenditure. Having $72,000 in failed UV parts that need to be replaced. Although it sounds like a lot now, I think we actually continue to save more in the future as we keep our eyes on this. We're providing a better environment for students and staff with not having heating issues, overheating issues, no fresh air coming into the building. So I I do think that there is more maintenance that comes along with this, but I think it's no different than a typical frequency of where we should already have have been at. I hope that answers your question.
And I and I agree with you, Roger, and I think it needs to be done because I don't think we need to be penny wise and palm foolish when it comes going forward. But I guess as a board, just to give us an idea of what those additional maintenance frequencies would cost in terms of manpower dollars, just to give us an idea. Because again, it's not only a conversation of of the upfront, it's going forward because more dollars are going to be committed to this will be less dollars available to spend elsewhere. So if you don't have that information now, that that's fine. I'm just trying to get an idea of what we're looking at going forward.
Well, I I mean, I can ideally for like filter replacements, we we have costs of that. I mean, when we get into into individual components of a unit, yes, we can certainly get costs for that units. But I I wouldn't be in this position if I was able to predict what was going to break down in the future. I mean, ideally, we can get an overall cost, yes. It it's certainly going to be more labor intensive. Ideally, the the common items such as filters are are listed out here. Replacing the equipment installs newer newer fans, actuators, dampers. So that does extend our timeline on it. I know I'm not answering your question, so it's 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 definitely increasing our our labor costs. And we we do have some on here as far as filters costs.
I appreciate it, Roger, and I didn't mean to catch you off guard there, but no, but thank you.
No, no, no problem. I definitely see more of a frequency happening though, and 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 our maintenance budget going up a little bit just the more we we get our eyes on this. Just because we haven't had our eyes on it, that's all.
And I think it's needed, so thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. Thank you, George, for the question and Roger for the answer. Dave, your hands up.
Thank you, thank you, Tim. I'd like to advance the idea that we consider moving forward on whatever is in 2.0. I'm not even sure I understand what 2.0 is, but the whole notion of getting moving forward with air conditioning and, you know, a complete overhaul of our air filtration and and cleansing system. And the reason why is a couple of reasons, actually. Number one, somebody's got to lead the pack in this thing. Some building has got to lead the pack in it. We are all independent school boards. You know, we we decide what we want to do for Sohegan. We should be considerate of the SAU and the whole expense of the cost. But if we advance the idea, it may give evidence that we have, you know, we have, we can do something well. Okay, the second reason I might want to push this forward is because the the cost issue is going to be one thing that has to be argued throughout the whole the the whole time. And I think if we can lead it and start it out earlier, it would help the discussion of costs throughout the throughout the school system. And the last thing is, is I think that, you know, that when you this this is the Sohegan is the last stop for the kids, you know? And one of the things we have is an availability of classrooms in Sohegan that, you know, the other schools don't have. And one of the things by moving this forward faster is there's a possibility that we could actually take other kids from different from the different school districts and having them, you know, in the annex or some other building, some other part of our building to, you know, enable kids to more kids to move through a cleaner environment. So I think there's a lot of reasons that advance this. I think one of them is the concern, as you point out, Amy, for the SAU costs all over, you know, the the overall costs. But, you know, it's not too hard to multiply by three. I think that's, you know, would be close to the right number. And to see what happens, I'm sure it's not going to be a multiple of three, but you know, but I'm just saying that it's probably some multiple of that, but somebody should somebody should lead this activity and get the, you know, the principles down and and lead the activity in terms of its relationship with a vendor and that kind of thing. So I think there's good reason to do this. Not not wait until the whole SAU is ready. That's my thought on it.
Thanks, Dave. I will let Amy, I know you're going to want to opine on this topic. I will just add in real quickly that I I basically agree with what you're saying, Dave. But I think we need to be careful to intertwine it with the joint facilities work. I have no problem being the district that leads that, but we have to make sure that we're not putting our the towns and therefore the other districts at a disadvantage by doing so. But I don't know, Amy, if you wanted to say a little bit more in that regard or if you just had something completely different, that's that's okay.
Yeah, no, I I I agree with you, Dave. I think really what the way I see it is I see HVAC for Sohegan being pulled out of Sohegan 2.0, and they're really two separate things. And we need to look at this is this is, you know, a high priority for our schools is to have functional and up to date HVAC systems. So the way I look at it, and and I'm glad to hear you say that, and I want to, you know, hear from other board members and be able to pass that along to the Joint Facilities Committee is that, you know, HVAC should really be pulled out of 2.0. And then the other items in 2.0 should be looked at and reviewed certainly by by Mike and Building Administration. And those items should really be interwoven with and prioritized with all of the work that will be happening with the Amherst School District and Sohegan. But I see the HVAC as a separate item that we should be looking to discuss and potentially move forward. So I don't know if there's other questions, but I would love to get to a point where we can look at making a motion to authorize a superintendent to move forward with the immediate funds that we need to expend through the unassigned fund balance and then have a discussion on the long term potential bonding for the HVAC product project. So those are two separate things, but I would love to see us discuss those and and potentially move forward.
So moved.
Yeah, so thank you, Amy. I know Stephanie has her hand up, but before I go to her, I was going to suggest exactly what Amy just said, which is kind of putting the suggested motion from Adam out on on the floor. And then we can discuss around that. Stephanie, did you have something to to add beyond what we're talking about?
No, I just wanted to say that with the Sohegan 2.0 Subcommittee that I work with, we had already talked about the we were pulling out the HVAC $7 million from anything we were discussing based on what Adam had presented for the reopening task force. So we just I didn't say we stopped discussing it, but we just pulled it out and said that's something that we're going to that Sohegan School Board is going to work on and we're going to go forward with JFAC on the other piece. I think Victoria had maybe a discussion with that and Amy already.
Perfect, all right. So let me put the suggested motion on the floor and then we'll have additional discussion if needed, because I think we've had a lot already. But then make the motion.
I'm sorry, one one more question. So one of the one of the things Adam has sent out in the past in the in some of the survey things is about security. And I'm curious about the Sohegan, if he's looking to have people standing outside Sohegan for security? Because I'm thinking if we're doing outside classrooms and tents and things like that, where are our kids going to be? Are they going to be out in the front field or are they going to be all out in the back? Where are those tents being placed? Where outside classrooms being placed, that sort of thing?
Yeah, so a couple of things about that. First, I'm not going to say publicly all of our plans for where kids will be outside, so I'm not going to do that. We are going to make use of the grounds. Bill Hagan is going to be part of that exterior security that we're going to be doing. And Porter Dodge is in the process of recruiting other community volunteers. It is for the Sohegan AMS campus as well as the elementary campuses.
Right, great. So oh, I guess I will read it and so therefore I will make the motion to direct the superintendent to request permission from the Department of Education to expend funds up to our our unassigned fund balance from the fiscal 20 FY 20 fiscal year for emergency expenditures as presented. Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second from Amy. Okay, we'll do a roll call. David?
I have questions.
Oh, sorry, yeah, discussion.
Yeah, I thought discussion should should fit after the motion instead of before.
Good, good idea. Go ahead.
Just to clarify what I what I heard earlier, Michelle said we had 417,000 in the unassigned fund balance. The spreadsheet that we were looking at shows 418,000 of immediate needs. I'm rounding. But Michelle also said that some of that 417,000 was unexpected revenues, which can't be spent. So how how much are we really going to be spending on this unassigned fund balance?
Let me clarify. So the the order that we would be requesting approval through the DOE under that order, it allows you to spend both the revenue and expenditure portion. So it allows you to access the full amount.
Oh, much better. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I guess you missed that part of the meeting, Steve, sorry.
Yes.
That's okay, you're caught up now. All right, so motion's on for any other discussion? No, Stephanie, your hand is up, taking as from before. Okay, all right, so we have a motion and we have a second. We'll do a roll call vote. David?
Yes, ten yes.
Stephanie?
Grand yes.
Steve?
Half one yes.
Laura? Laura, you you cut it and out real quickly, so I didn't hear if that was a positive or negative.
Taylor, yes.
Thank you. George?
Torres, yes.
And Grons, so yes, so that passes 7-0. So great, now do we want to have additional discussion at this point on the long term? Or is that something that we should move to perhaps a future meeting where we have a little bit more detail discussed? Yes, more more forward in the future? All right, Dave, you raised your physical hand, so I will reach out to you real quick.
Well, you know, I think we're just talking about a couple of small things really, and we're not voting on the warrant article going forward, just basically voting on pulling the HVAC out of 2.0, right, Amy? And then after that, investigating what it would cost so we get a good sound estimate. And I I don't think that that's would be disagreeable to a whole lot of people.
No, I I I agree. Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, Dave, but I'm not sure that that requires a vote to pull it out of 2.0. I think, I mean, we can certainly do that.
Well, they've already agreed to do that, Tim.
Well, I'm wondering, is there a way, just so that we can signal to JFAC that the Sohegan Board is moving forward with the process of getting a scope and looking at the whole bonding process? So is there a way, I don't know if we need a formal motion or not, but maybe a straw poll or some sort of agreement that this is the path that we want to go down so that that JFAC feels comfortable not including that in their priority list? not including that in their priority list.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Uh, Adam, uh, would you suggest that we can do a, a, or have a a, an opinion on straw poll over motion?
Yeah, I, I think just a consensus from the board is fine. Um, literally just a thumbs up or thumbs down from people is good enough for that at this point.
Uh, okay. Well, I, I don't have cameras on two of our members. So, uh, how about the rest, anybody else? Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs up, thumbs. Okay, so that's five.
George and Laura.
Sure, yeah. George and Laura, you guys can go out, come off mute and say whether you agree or not.
My thumb is up.
All right, great. How about you, Laura?
Uh, yeah, that would be fine, but I'm wondering the progress that's already been made by the people working on it in that subcommittee. Would it be lost?
No, no. So Stephanie is on that subcommittee and, uh, she's already at that point where they decided to stop talking about it as part of two point O because they realized it's coming out. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I had a conversation with the Chair of the Subcommittee, Victoria Parisi, and she, um, she was hoping that this would be the outcome at her board meeting. So they have stopped working on that and they're working with, uh, with Lance and Mike to develop, um, priorities other than HVAC.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, great, perfect. All right. So, um, there we go. Everybody feels that that's the right way to, to go about this. And so we'll have, I think we should put that on, um, more detail for next month's, uh, our next meeting. Was that the end of this month or early? I think it's early next month, right? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that can be a committee report Amy can provide perhaps.
Okay, perfect. All right. Um, I, I think that covered pretty much everything on the reopening plan. Does anybody else have any other questions? Um, Stephanie, yes?
I have questions. Sorry. Um, so it, I'll go down, um, quickly. I think most of them are going to be a quick one. Uh, ninth and 10th graders, again, I'm not a fan that their education doesn't have the specials included. Um, I'll, I'll talk to, I hope I, I can have a conversation with Mike, I just, and, and maybe with Adam and just understand, is this the model going forward? And do we think this is the model going forward? Or is this just because of the situation we are in right now?
Uh, I, I think it's a situation we're in right now, and I think we're going to find that some things work better than we thought and others worse, and we'll learn from it. So no commitments for the future.
Okay. Um, oh, good question. Uh, voting in school. So Adam, I, I had sent you an email about that. Um, definitely some current concerns about having public walking through the school, even though our students aren't there. Do we have enough time to properly clean the school, have it ready for students to walk in the next day, restroom usage, that sort of thing?
Yeah, my answer is yes, and it's partially because of our philosophy and why Rogers requesting more custodians. So our belief is that if we find out about, that someone's been in our school that has COVID nineteen, we're gonna find out days later, like not a day later or hours later, but days, maybe weeks later. And so if that's the case, we have to think about the school being ready and back to baseline every morning, the next morning. And so our cleaning procedures every night have got to be so good that we feel confident that if someone had COVID nineteen yesterday, they go home tomorrow with a fever and three days later they get a test and five days after that, get a result that our school was safe for that next day after that kid was in the school or that staff member was in the school. Same with voting and the nice thing about voting is it is a condensed area of the school. It's not the whole school. So we'll be able to focus on it and get it ready for September ninth. Or November.
Yeah, okay. Um, so contact tracing, um, something that Mike said during the meetings yesterday via Zoom, I just need clarification on. If the school is notified by a family that a student tested positive, what is, Mike said something about the school will be doing some sort of notification to people who might be exposed. Are those kids then required to not come into school? Are they required to stay home? What's the process?
Yeah. So if we, if we find out, and some of this is changing, the state is changing things on us too. So bear with us as we get used to these new procedures as well. But as we understand it right now, if a, if a student or staff member tests positive for COVID nineteen, we do believe now that we will be notified even for one case. That's what we, we've been told. And I hope that happens. That needs to happen. If that happens, we will notify all of the, the students and staff members that were in contact with that particular student, just based on the, the schedule. Uh, we don't know who kids have walked into the building with or who they've, you know, we don't know that. But the ones that they're in class with, we're going to notify. And if it's an isolated case, there, there should be no need for anyone else to stay home. People can, if they want to, certainly, but if they're not symptomatic, the guidance is they don't need to also quarantine. If we have a class, if, if, if there are five kids in one particular class and all test positive on a Monday and we find out about that, we probably would say to the rest of the class, we want you to stay home for, at least for a few days, until we get further guidance from DHA just about what to do in that case. Because we're gonna look to them to say, tell us what to do. But certainly it stands to reason if there's like a, a mini cluster within our school that we would take additional precautions.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, so senior project and community service being no longer required. Um, I have to say, I heard from multiple seniors, they're actually very disappointed to hear that. As, as much as stress as senior project puts on, they're really kind of sad to hear that it's no longer part of the graduation requirements and curriculum and they kind of want to understand why. I, I don't know why the decision was made.
Yeah. So I think we can look at that, um, and determine if that's still the path forward. Luckily, nothing has happened with senior project yet. Uh, but I, um, sorry, my dog saw something. Um, but, uh, we can take a look at that if, if, if there's a desire from the board for us to read that one. Mike, go ahead.
Adam, uh, it, it is optional. So those seniors who are, who are, um, really interested in, in participating in the senior project, uh, they certainly can reach out and make sure that that happens. And Stephanie, I, I can tell you, I talked about six or seven seniors and it didn't seem that too many were overly disappointed. So I think it all depends on the seniors that you talk to.
Must depend who you talk to.
And when you talk to them. But, uh, it is absolutely optional and, uh, these decisions that we're making. Um, so we will kind of revisit it as we move forward, you know, long term for sure.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted, because if we're starting to make decisions like that, I think it would be nice that we would be informed as a school board that these decisions are making, because we're getting a lot of questions and I'm like, I don't know. I don't know. And I, I feel bad not knowing and not being, understanding, being part of, at least understanding why. I think is the, the piece. Um, oh, we're, so one thing I think we need to clarify also, yesterday, when you were going over the, they were, um, opening programs, we need, definitely need to get more detail out there for those students who are going to be remote students for those first opening days. Um, they're very confused right now. They don't know what's really gonna be like for them that first day, especially if they're a freshman or a senior. Um, are they gonna be sitting on Zoom all day, watching kids do stuff? So I think we just somehow need to clarify for everybody. Um, whether it's a, an email sent out or something to just make sure that remote students are feeling included as part of the process. I know it's hard because they are choosing to go remote. So I don't, I, I'm just thinking communication wise, can we help that, that detail come out together? That would be good. And then one last thing regarding Empower. So there were definitely teachers who struggled with Empower last year, and I noticed in the reopening plan, we're requiring people, all the teachers to use Empower now. How are we supporting those teachers that struggled with it? Um, you know, I think about, at the end of the school year, teachers are allowed to override the grading system, override Empower and put in the grade they felt based on their, their, uh, information they had that the student actually earned, because some of them were using Empower, some of them weren't. How are we ensuring that so, that everything in Empower is going to be solid this year? We don't have a, a maximum achievable score problem or what are we doing? That might be a Christine question.
And Mike, feel free to jump in too. Um, so first of all, Natalie and I spent, um, two full days with every department this summer. Um, and actually, um, did really deep work around our, um, learning targets for every single department. So we've made a, um, pretty significant adjustments and adjustments where departments are excited, like they, they're excited about being able to score against standards and to score against these, um, and sorry, my dog decided now he's gonna grab a squeaky toy when he was laying down the whole night. Um, uh, so there, the, every department walked away and said, wow, I'm really excited about what we did. They feel like they needed to get through a yucky year and try to figure out, you know, how to score against standards and how to use the software and, um, what improvements and changes they needed to make. So we got really good feedback from those two summer days and, um, while it's, it's tough because we knew it was a disrupted year. We gave, you know, the teachers all of June to have a break and then brought them back. And it was a lot this summer to have every department for two full days, but it was worthwhile because of, um, uh, the fact that teachers are feeling more ownership around their learning targets and feeling like they're better understanding how to score against the standards. We also spent time developing, um, assessment maps, um, to really give students an overview of the whole year. And they actually looked at every, um, you know, uh, quarter, um, and looked at, you know, where are, what's our maximum achievable score? Are we giving students opportunities to reach fours at the end of each period? So every department did that work, um, which I'm really excited about that. They'll be able to share all of that with students and students will be able to see. And teachers are also excited. In many places, we've reduced the number of learning targets, which allows both teachers and students to better understand and to track their own progress. So that was really a successful professional development we did. Um, I'm also happy to provide, um, on one of our PD, six reopening PD days. Um, one is a technology-based day and we are, um, planning on providing some Empower training and, um, I can provide some different sessions. I'm, I'm still pulling together each of the, the sessions that are planned for that day, but we can definitely pull both a beginner session. Um, because I know some, we, we have some new teachers, um, uh, and then a kind of more advanced session for, um, other teachers. We are also piloting um, other grading and software, grading and reporting software. We just felt really strongly that we needed to have one system. We can't have some teachers in one um, new system that they're piloting and not also using Empower to really truly be able to compare those two systems and say, hey, we need to move away from Empower because teacher ease is better or, you know, uh, any other program we choose, um, to pilot.
Thank you. Um, so how are we then, uh, how are we assessing students at the beginning of the year? And once we assess them, we say, we know some kids might be behind in certain standards, others might be on, others might be ahead. How are we providing that process that they're moving forward? So the kids that are already there or ahead aren't sitting there waiting for the others to get there.
Yeah. So I actually just met with all of the department coordinators today to, um, roll out, um, all of the work that we're going to be doing for those six professional development days. Because coordinators are helping to facilitate those days. So, um, and actually, uh, you're welcome to look at the PD agendas. They're in the general Slack channel. Um, so if you're on Slack, um, pop onto the general channel and we're still adding links and resources. So they're going to be built out even more. Um, but, uh, all, all of them are on there. So, uh, one of the things that we're doing the first day is we're, um, focusing deeply on, um, the need to, to teach grade level standards and it, no matter what grade level it is and not start with last March. Um, but actually to start with, um, uh, you know, what the, the level of expectation is for, um, that grade level. And then to look at, um, continuously assessing students. So not just using NWEA, we will be doing that ninth and 10th grade. But to be continually assessing students all along and look at, how do we weave in, you know, is this a, a critical standard that we need to go back to? Because we have that unfinished learning or is this a standard that we can move ahead on? Um, where it's not one of those critical standards that is preventing us to move, moving forward. So we can touch briefly and then move ahead. So teachers are actually diving deeply into what the research says we should be focusing on this year. We have some really good guidance documents. Um, and then they're going to, um, be looking at their instructional strategies and how they build in more of that, you know, ongoing assessment for students. So I'm pretty confident our six PD days are, are going to address that specific issue.
Thank you. Thank you. And then I have one final question. Um, and it, it hasn't have to do with grading and report. Um, so the students that, uh, the, the students are getting, I, I, they're getting confused, I guess. So at some point, it was said that kids would be able to come in for classes when they had a class that was going to be in person. And if their teacher was going to be remote, they were going to be able to stay at school or they could go home depending what they want to do. Now we have students, some of them might have chosen remote. Some of them might have chosen in person and they're saying, does that mean I have to stay on campus? The kids that are remote, they're like, I just want to go in for that one class. I'm assuming they cannot because of the numbers now.
Mike, talk us through it. Good questions, Stephanie.
So a, at this point, where we're at is we had the kids choose so we could, you know, get a, an understanding of how many, so that we had the students and the, and the staff choose so we could get the numbers where we needed them to be. Because the goal is to have a, a manageable number in the building at one time. And we do very much want this to naturally work out in the sense of if students want to be here and taking classes and staff want to be here in person as opposed to remote, we want that to, to naturally flow. But at the same time, it's, it's very personalized as we get into this and we learn that kids want to be on campus to take one particular class. We're gonna have to have that conversation because we can't just at this point in time say, hey, come and go as you please. We need to be able to track it. And so we have some systems that are going to be put in place to be able to track it. It is a very, uh, um, I think student friendly and staff friendly system that we have to work through some of the details. But we need a baseline right now in segment one. So we can know like how the building's going to work and how it's gonna flow and if it's gonna be, you know, something that we can manage. We feel like we can manage. Uh, but we need to have somewhere to start. And then as we get into the, the, uh, more refined areas of coming in for one and leaving when you want, we can't. So right now, that, you know, we've said, hey, you come to campus and eleven to twelfth graders, you can come and go. Eleven and twelfth graders can, can come and go as they want. If, if you're in person, if you're choosing remote, right now, we have not said you could come on to campus right now, except when, and when we're going into Wednesdays. We have not got to that point. And I can understand why people might be confused. Um, but that's where we had to start currently.
Okay. So going forward, if kids think they want to come in for a class or two, we definitely need to, one, they're gonna have to probably say they're in person, but two, they need to come, be able to contact you and say, hey, here's what I'm thinking and why, and have a good reason.
Gonna have, have to take it a case by case initially, and I think the population is manageable. Um, and I'm sure there are some classes that if they have the ability to be in person, they're gonna want to be in person. And if they're gonna have some classes, they might be able, not be able to manage. But we're gonna have to work that. And, uh, but for segment one, we did ask for kids to declare so we could get a handle of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, I have Laura and then after that, Dave. So go ahead, Laura.
Piggyback right after Stephanie's question about in-person. The schedules came out, but I didn't see indicated on the schedules if they were remote or in-person per class. Like some classes, you mentioned before the plan that AP and dual enrollment will now all be uh, remote. Everything that only has a single teacher will be remote. Is that correct?
So right now, if you are taking, taking an AP class, um, you might be in an AP class that the teacher is on campus and, and, and taking a class with that teacher. But we also have, like, let's say the class is a fourteen and we need to have something that kind of, you know, brings the class together. So we're gonna use a learning management tool, Google Classroom, so it can be a, a, uh, a Google Classroom, you know, based class. And so it doesn't matter where the kids are at. All right. And they can be at the house or they can be in person. But we feel like the teacher could be at the house or in person in that class because it's managed by, through Google Classroom and through how the instructional strategies that the teachers are gonna use. That's how we are planning on being able to offer all the classes that we're able to offer. And it is regardless of where the staff or the students are, are located. So the remote part is where they're taking the course, not so much the platform they're taking the class through.
Okay, um, for that, on that, is there, how many individual stations will you need for students at any one time during the day? For like independent? For like independent stations to log in remotely to a teacher that's also remote?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by independent stations, like spaces throughout the classroom or?
Throughout the building.
Yeah. So we are, it is very, I will tell you, it's pretty sophisticated on how we're managing the building. And we have been working on since we've got the declarations in and we're still, we're still chasing. Students and families down, you know, as of today, I think we have it down to like 12 to 16 kids where we're looking for their declaration. We have, as Adam mentioned earlier, roughly about 75% of, of students and staff that want to be in person and 25% of that remote. And it all depends on what periods the classes are running and the space we have and being able to socially distance. And create the spaces throughout the building to accommodate all the different areas. We feel like we can do it. There's been a lot of good work. About it. And I appreciate the administrative staff, you know, working behind the scenes to make sure that happens. It's a, it's quite an endeavor to offer this much choice. That's what I think the beauty of the plan is. It is a, a plan that allows a ton of choice for students and staff and families. And now it's on the administration and with the help of some teachers to be able to implement this plan. And we have not, that, those details are not, are complete at this time, Laura.
Do you expect to be prepared in two weeks for the number of students that have to interact with a teacher online at once?
Yes.
Okay. And so will students not know until their first day of class? If, or, or being that moment that they're in class and they go to the room? Is that when they're going to find out that their teacher's not there?
No. Good question. We answered this question a couple of times last night. We were able to have. Some meetings with the ninth and 10th grade students and families that wanted, and then the 11th and 12th grade. Students and families that wanted, and this question came up and, and as we have a plan in spaces designated. We will release that information to our. Students and families. We're thinking sometime next week, but I don't want to commit to a date until, till we have a plan in place.
Okay.
But that's a good question, but we are going to get that out there.
Okay. I have David and then Amy and then Stephanie. We have a lot to cover still outside of this. So if something's been already said, please let's kind of move over that part. Thanks.
Think this is covered, but maybe it has. The classes that are being canceled, Mike, are changed or eliminated. It would be helpful to know if they were, helpful to the board to know responding to parents. And maybe you even you identify what classes are closed because the master schedule doesn't dictate that the number of students meets a, you know, a fresh, a lower threshold. Or if it's COVID or if it's a lack of a teacher or if it's, you know, a staffing concern and another direction, meaning doubling up on certain classes and stuff like that for backup. It'd be helpful for us to know as a board and for parents to know that, you know, nobody's taking AP calculus anymore, I guess. And that's the reason why it's not being offered. It's just a comment. A number of people have been asking that question and I think it's fair to give them a, a reason now. Everything isn't COVID, I'm sure. You know, I'm sure that there are some other issues that are going on as well. And, you know, just to help understand this, it might be, you know, valuable to have that in, in mind when you're talking about these things.
No, I appreciate that, Dave. We did talk about that in some detail on the first parent information night on August 11th. For those that tuned in and we had a list of classes that were canceled or, and. Or pushed off to the next year. And there was a combinations of reasons from, you know, not being able to have a, a class that was as, you know, meaningful. You know, when, when students were participating remotely, but most of the courses that did not run were because they lacked enrollment to run. And then there is, you know, some, a couple of teaching changes. So there was a combination of three things and. We talked a little bit about that and we'll continue to talk about it, but yeah, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Did you, by the way, did you identify, I, I saw that list of 30 classes. Did you identify which ones were because of a lack of enrollment and which ones were because of, you know, some COVID changes or something like that? Or do you really care to do that? Or is it something you don't want to do?
We, we, we know why they're not running and we kind of just glossed over the, the list. We didn't get into details which ones.
Okay. I got it.
I think the bottom line though, Dave, is that there is a list of classes that are not being offered for various reasons. And so that's about all we need to know. We, we shouldn't need to know the exact reasons. All right. Amy and then Stephanie.
I'll be super quick and Mike, I, I know I brought this up before and I'm not expecting an answer or any, any response necessarily tonight. But because of all the changes that are happening with the schedule. I would love to see a grad plan done earlier for students as opposed to waiting until I think they do it junior year. But because there's going to be changes, I feel like students should be. Doing some long-term planning earlier so that they make sure they meet their goals before they graduate. So if you could, when, I know you, this is not something you need, you're, as a priority right now with everything happening. But maybe at a future board meeting in a couple of months, I'd love to see something on that.
Okay.
Okay. Stephanie and then Laura, and then we should start to try to wrap this up.
All right. Only two things. One. You mentioned 75% of the students want to come into school. But Adam, if you are starting on yellow as your code, that's only 70% of the students that are supposed to be in the school. Can you explain how we're going to handle that?
Yeah. And that was somewhat arbitrary target, but I will remind you that except for the first day of school. We have absences where not every student shows up. And so we expect it to be around 70%. First day of school, first two days of school are only half ninth graders and seniors and then 10th and 11th, and then we're going to monitor it. If we have issues where we think that our hallways are too full of people or there are classrooms that are too full. We'll look at providing some other artificial limits, but I think it's going to work out where with app, with the typical absence rate that we have, that will have around 70%. And that number again was not a scientific number. That was in our plan. It was, we want, said, let's think about maybe 70%.
Okay. Yeah. So excellent. We, we approved that and then it's 75. I'm like, oh, how do we explain that? I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
I can explain like throughout the day, not all of those 75% of students will be in the building at one time.
Good point.
In the, the staggered, you know, with the ninth grade and the 10th grade at the end, and then the seniors coming and going. But that's what our, our work over the next, you know, four or five days will, will let us know as we kind of put this puzzle together.
Okay. All right. Then the last question is busing. Is there any update on busing or? For schedule, timing, who gets bused, that sort of thing?
Yeah. We, first of all, students will need to have a bus pass this year. So you can't just hop on the bus. We need to know who's riding the bus and when. That's why we asked it in the survey that parents got. And our company's working now on schedules. So based on that information that we're providing them. So Michelle's giving them that access to the. The data of who wants to ride and then we're working through it to do bus routes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then Laura.
I have a few questions and then a statement. I'm a little nervous about the reduction of opportunities for the ninth, 10th and 11th grade to take classes. I realize some of it is. Due to our current pandemic and the reopening and all the challenges we have to begin with, but I'm nervous about. You know, students only have three years to choose electives and prove themselves for their college applications. And if you're taking away from the freshman and the sophomore and they're not allowed to have electives. It's going to put them at a disadvantage when they apply to college and they don't have interest shown on their transcript. And they can't demonstrate that they have. An aptitude for something that they're interested in. I just feel electives are very important. And I think it, it'll hurt the school in the long run if we can't. Make sure that we're offering electives to students. I realize this year might not. Might be too challenging, but I hope in general that this is something that's important to our school. Do you have any guidance, Mike, on whether you are canceling electives or is it just this year?
No, I don't think we're going to be canceling electives long-term, but I think the decisions that we made for this year are because of the situation that we find ourselves in. And I think Laura, as, as the year goes on, you're going to find that there's going to be. More opportunities than you think. And I think as it goes on, you know, beyond this year, I think you're going to see some things that we put into place. And because of the situation that we found ourselves in, to try to close the gap or make up for the lack of opportunities that ninth and 10th and 11th graders. May have kind of suffered because of this situation. It's definitely something that's on our mind. It's definitely something we're concerned about. And I think a number of. Obviously, other schools and other students are dealing with the same thing. And I think our short-term plan, our long-term plan. As it, as they becomes more public and, and as we kind of piece it together, cause it's not all put into place, I, I think you'll be happy with it.
Thank you. Um, the syllabuses from the e-start and the other classes that are being offered to students, the online classes. Do we have staff at the high school that are reviewing all those syllabuses and the curriculum? Are you, are we kind of relinquishing control of the curriculum?
Laura, is this for dual enrollment and running start courses you're asking about?
The e-start.
I'm not familiar with e-start. Which courses are those?
E-start, if I understand it correctly, is through the university system in, in New Hampshire.
So it is the running start?
Yes, but.
Of course. Okay. So, and Mike can probably speak to this too. Karen oversees that and every year the, the syllabi are sent. To whichever institution we're partnering with, whether it's, you know, Nashville Community College or, you know, any other college. And they do review them prior to us sharing them with students. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
I was also concerned about the maximum achievable score. I know we've gone back and forth on this, but I, I believe that majority of the board might be in support that the fact that the. Students should be able to earn a four in the class, not just on one particular assignment. And because their grades are averaged at the end. And if they're not allowed to earn, it's not reflected on their transcript that they weren't allowed to earn the maximum grade.
Laura, just to clarify, grades aren't averaged. It's kind of, it's more similar to a weighted average that's used in empower or a power law. So that the later assignments have the heavier weight and we make sure that those are the assignments out of a four. So if a student got a two out of two and then a three out of a three and a four out of a four, they don't have like a 3.5, they, they would have a four for that. So I'm happy, you know, if there's another time you want to go more deeply into those calculations. Or if Adam would like me to present to the board on that, I'm happy to do that at another time.
I think I'm fairly confident and familiar with the various algorithms that are used for those calculations. And I, I'm well aware that they don't. Earning a four at the end in one assignment. Is not enough to ensure them the ability to earn the grade that they deserve. And I feel that it would be held against them because it's. It appears that they are able to earn something that they're not able to acquire. But we can talk about this later. I, I have heard that teacher ease has similar problems that empower had with the same issue. And is that correct? Were they, it uses an algorithm to calculate the grade based on how many grades you have in the system, et cetera? Is that correct, Christine?
There are different calculations that you can choose when you use that software. There are options for what calculation you want to use.
I'll relinquish to Dave. He had his hands up.
All right. Um, Dave, I'mma let you ask a question. We really need to move on. I think. There's been a lot of good questions and I think their staff has done a great job of answering them. Hopefully to everybody's satisfaction.
Thank you, Tim. Maybe this is really easy. I was going to ask a question about CTE, Adam. Can I redirect that to Karen Chenidis? I just need to know from my other committee what, what's going on.
Yeah, I know you serve on that state committee. Feel free to reach out to me and or Mike and we can get it through Karen if we need to.
I'll, I'll talk to you after this then. Or some other time. Mike or you or?
Well, contact me if you wouldn't mind and I'll get it to Mike and Karen or whoever.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Laura, do you have one last thing that, or?
Yes. The Google form for athletes before practice that they have to submit. I had trouble with it and then I, I've reached out to various directions as a parent and as a board member. And Adam, it's very circular, the answers I get. It wanted to you to contact the SAU if you had a temperature above 98.6. It wanted to know if you had slept outside of your residence for the last 14 days. And contacting the SAU HR department, I wasn't even sure they'd be available after hours. And 98.6 seemed a little low for the purposes of the screening and I wasn't sure. How it might affect students and the tracking of where you're sleeping. I just don't see how it's justified. These aren't positive COVID cases. These are just athletes going to practice. And I, from what I've heard from other people is they just intend not to answer this question. And I don't see what. If they don't answer it, I don't see what recourse we have. Adam, can you respond to that?
Well, Laura, as you know, athletics is a, an optional activity for students and there are more restrictions on athletes than there are coming to school. Especially as we think about having an athletic season this fall. If we have one, there will be significantly more restrictions on athletes and there will be on normal students if they intend to compete interscholastically. Now, the form that students had to fill out over the summer to access our buildings was the same form that every employee who had access to our buildings has to fill out. In order to be on campus and it was based on guidance directly from DHHS at the time. And those things will certainly evolve with time, but that was a form that all of our employees have had to fill out as well over the summer.
So this form will end when school starts?
End or change.
I'm not sure.
End or change. It might evolve as school starts. But parents will be asked to sign a, or to, to check off a screening questionnaire before school every day. That's part of the process for students to be able to access the on-campus building, just for any student. And it is going to ask questions about your travel. And your temperature and, and all sorts of things like that.
Well, I've seen other forms and they were more 100 degrees, which is pretty standard traditionally. And then the, the tracking question was outside of New England. It wasn't. And then the the tracking question was outside of New England. It wasn't, did you not sleep in your primary residence? So are you are you planning to continue asking students where they slept and?
Well, Laura, your 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 question is unfair on the face. We did not ask students where they slept. We asked them whether they slept outside of their residence. That's different. We don't care where kids sleep. But at the time, those questionnaires, those questions were based on guidance from the CDC at the time.
Well, the instruction said if you slept outside your residence, you had to call someone at the SAU HR department. And I I know that cross-country practices was at seven thirty in the morning. Are you, do you have people available to answer the phone?
Nope, we don't. But again, that form was primarily for staff. But we wanted to give students the ability to do athletics over the summer, and so we provided them access as a courtesy to them, frankly, and uh that that form was uh was primarily for for, again, for staff, but we used it for students as well. And flawed as it was, we hope it provided some enjoyment to our students who got to practice over the summer.
Okay, um thanks, Laura, for asking those questions. I know you had sent an email to Adam, which he had actually had answered pretty much verbatim, or what he just told you. So I'm a little disappointed that you had to bring it up again. Um but yeah, here we are. So I think we are done with the reopening plan. Let's move on to the first reading of the policy. Uh or actually, does the SAU meeting that we had classify as the first reading, and should this therefore be the second?
Yeah, so um I believe you guys already took care of the policy as part of your consent agenda. It was in the item number ten in the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay, maybe I have a don't have that updated schedule. Well, anyway, good. So thank you. Uh reminder. Uh I guess now we have discussed appointment of a liaison to the Amherst and Mount Vernon Boards of Selective People. So if anybody from Amherst that wants to be the liaison to the Amherst Board of Selective.
I could do it.
Laura, okay. And uh anybody from Mount Vernon, George? If you don't have any interest, George.
I'm sorry, I was I was I was on mute. Can I get back to you?
Sure, you know, I was realistically, maybe we can do a um a tag team effort, because it's going to be, I think it's difficult for either one of us to get there. So.
Yeah.
I mean, there's that many choices to to be that person, so.
Sure.
We'll approach a tag team. Sure. All right. Um now, next thing is community council reps. So we need to appoint some representatives uh for the year. We have, to my knowledge, I think, four applicants. Um and those should have all been in the packets as well, so everybody should have up needs to read those. This is some, I know in the past, Adam, we've done this in um in uh non-public. Do we, should we do it at that point, uh or then come out of public and say who it is? And and more from my own edification, how many open spots are there for this new staff, this position?
Yeah, so a couple of things. First, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's two spots. Is that, I can't see Amy. Is that right, Amy? Is it two?
So I believe um so, well, there's Mount Vernon spots and there's Amherst spots. So do we have anyone from Mount Vernon who has applied, or is it?
Well, I have I have not seen any Mount Vernon applications. There's four applications from Amherst.
Okay.
There are actually seven applications. So in the Trello card, you might have to expand to see the other three. So there are
Okay.
There are seven. Um I know that I, just from looking at them, I know five are Amherst. I don't know about two, whether they're Amherst or Mount Vernon, but
Okay.
We'll discuss this in non-public, um because it affects the reputation of someone that's not on the board. Um so we can do that at the end and then come out and make those nominations if you want.
Yeah, that's.
How we've done it.
Okay, we'll do that. So then um budget process discussion. Would you hit that? And I think that's Michelle Bailey Wick. So Michelle wants to um leave that discussion. First of all, I will say that uh she's come up with, I I think, a really good plan uh for this year to keep us more in tune with A, what's going on, but but B, keep us more focused and organized. So um I'll let her take uh take it from there. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. Um yes, we uh I met with uh Kim, the chair of the board and um moderator and the chair of the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee. And we debriefed the process um from last year and talked about ways that we might improve and streamline things. And from that, we've created a process that has um periods of time where we will start with the presentation of the budget to the school board, and then right on the heels of that, we'll have a meeting date that is open to both the full board and the um Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee members, where I go through the entire budget document and talk about the logistics of the budget document, how it works, where to find information, and things of that nature. Then there will be a period of time of about seven days that allows for the submission of questions through the question-answer form. And we will try to turn around responses to those questions with within a um two-day window of time. At the close of that timeframe, the question uh form will close and will begin the subcommittee reviews. So each of the categories will be reviewed, and there's a set date for those have already been scheduled and coordinated in terms of the times. And at the subcommittee meetings, I will open up the form for submission of questions, so that questions that come up during that time can be submitted. And whether they're responded to in the meeting or not, we'll document them in that process. And um we'll review the responses from the questions for that category at that time as well. So we've kept the categories the same as the prior year, uh which will be familiar to folks. Then after those days have already been scheduled, and uh after that period of time, we will hold a joint meeting between the board and the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee to review items that are needing further discussion between the two groups, just to hopefully come to some common ground around the budget process or an understanding of differences of opinion and why, you know, one group might be recommending an uh one number over another. And then that would move forward to a formal present, a formal report from the Advisory Finance Committee to the board, and the board then moving forward with finalizing their budget document. See. Let's see if I can. And I do have a list of dates. I have sent out the uh meeting invites to the chair of the Advisory Finance Committee and to him, and when we assign individuals to the different categories, then I will forward the meeting invites at that time as well. Let me get those dates. And I'm happy to share my screen if that would be helpful for people to see the dates.
Yeah, that'd be good, Michelle, if you could just uh show quickly. We don't, I don't want to necessarily spend a lot of time right now, uh because I have some thoughts on how we can expedite this process. But go ahead and just share so we can at least have an idea.
Um so are you able to see the uh budget? Let me see, let me reshare that. Okay, so I think you can see now the different categories: food service, special ed administration, curriculum, technology facilities, and athletics. These are the administrators assigned to those meeting dates, and we've set the the duration of the meeting and the the date and the time. So some are in the morning and some are in the afternoon. We're hopeful that as folks look at categories that they would want to participate in, that they're also reviewing the date of the meeting and fitting that into their schedules as well.
Yeah, so um typically in the past, I we've um whenever we start talking about the the budget review, we select, go move forward and select committee assignments, positions. So um I'm not going to do that tonight, but I will uh maybe take that offline, because I want everybody to, as Michelle mentioned, take a look at the different categories and and also look at those dates and times. Those are already predetermined um and will not move. So um and I also want to respect uh seniority on the board. So as Steve has got about fifty years on the board, he can start as the first person to pick whatever he wants to do. Um and then I'll move down through the seniority ranks until all the positions have been fulfilled. So um you know, the longer you've been on the board, the uh earlier you pick, but you also have to keep in mind what the those dates and times, because those will not change. Okay, so um I'll surprise out for emails from me. And I'll start with Steve, and then um I'm not going to necessarily email each, the whole board every single time. I'll just email when it's your turn to select and let you know what's available at that point. Okay, uh if everybody's good with that, that's how I like to move forward, and we'll be doing that soon, like within the next week or so, so we can start to figure out who we're uh assigning ourselves to. Yes.
Two things. One, uh this is the first I've ever heard of seniority being used. I'm not going to make a big deal of it, but that's the first.
It is the first time, exactly, but I want to do a little bit.
Interesting. Um the second thing I just want to bring up is, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say one piece of frustration. I'm glad that we've reviewed the budget process and we have a a better process in place. I was assigned the liaison for the Sohegan Finance Budget Committee, and I had spoken up earlier in in March and April and said I wanted to be involved in any discussions when we were talking about revamping the budget. And I never even knew you guys were sitting down talking about it. I wish I was involved. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, um well, actually, we do want to have a liaison that's going to be um integral to the meetings with that Advisory Finance Committee. And the, all we had was a discussion of what what the format is going to be. That was all it was about, and it was nothing about anything else. So um that was held at the appropriate level. And so when we move forward um with our normal budget discussions, then we need a the liaison that's committed to making all the joint, uh sorry, multiple, the Advisory Finance Committee meetings. Apparently, that didn't happen as much last year, that I think there was some miscommunications between the two organizations. Um and there was a lot of frustration. So this year, we can't let that lapse happen again. Um so if if uh anybody else, so obviously Stephanie wants to be that person. If anybody else wants to be, please notify me and.
Well, it was already voted on back when we made assignments. So I was selected back in March.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, that was one of your committee assignments. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so there you go.
Been involved. That's why I wish I had been involved in the discussion, I guess.
Well, yeah, again, it was just an organizational discussion. It had nothing to do with with the um
Yeah.
The liaison position.
Yeah, yeah, still through the budget process. That's okay. I'm done.
We agreed to differ. Okay, um so that's all. Is there any other questions or concerns at this point on the budget process? Okay, uh we have a agenda add for the turf replacements. Um I know that they want to have a two-minute discussion on that, so I'm gonna hit my stopwatch and tell you to get started. Go ahead.
I asked for five minutes, Tim.
Oh, okay, five minutes. I'll give you five.
So um in the history of this turf field field replacement uh budget, that item that we have, we originally decided that we were going to use the uh the proceeds from field rentals. But the problem was, we never really got a whole lot of proceeds going. There was a a lot of um issues around it. You know, one of the problems was uh we had nobody really assigned to monitoring it or going after it. And um so we've fallen way behind on this. So my first motion, I think I sent it all out to everybody. Everybody have it or do not have it? Anyway, let me read the first motion. To move to add a responsibility to the job description of the athletic director. This responsibility is to raise funds to maintain the artificial turf stadium known as Cavetti Field. The superintendent will direct changing the job description to appropriate person in the SAU organization. The athletic director will provide progress reports to the S, the the Sohegan Board um as appropriate. Basically, what happened with this whole thing is we never really delegated the authority and responsibility to anybody. And so it kind of languished, and nobody really pushed it forward, and nobody monitored it. Uh when Dan came on board, Dan started to monitor and work with it, and he started, uh him and I know that he started to try to do some golf tournaments and things like that. That didn't, that didn't happen. It fell, kind of fell through. So we do need somebody designated to do this. And uh it had been the assumption of the committee, actually, that it was go, going to go to the athletic director. And um now we have the athletic director, and we'd just like to have this added as a responsibility. Now, Adam took the step when he um interviewed the two candidates, the candidate for the athletic director that, you know, we, I asked him to to say that this was one of the responsibilities, because that's the way we had intended it in the long run, and and Adam apparently did so, I'm sure, right, Adam? And so um basically, it's it's a known thing. It's not, it's going to be terribly uh, you know, in opposition. And I think that that person needs to help, get some help as well. But I think we need to get somebody to lead the effort, and that's the first motion. The second motion is to move, well, let me, if you want to vote, you want to do this first in order, I have Tim, Tim, or what? You want to um vote on the first one and then?
Yeah, yeah, let's just take them one at a time. That way we can.
Okay, right.
So there's uh you made the motion. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second, then I have a question.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's the process. So uh second by Amy. Now we'll have discussion. So Amy, go ahead with your discussion.
So Dave, um how will that work with um in terms of scheduling with the rec department?
Well, the school has priority, and so the athletic director has the ability to decide, assign what time is available. And what happened in the past, unfortunately, was the athletic director just blocked out all the time that made sense for people to rent the field, and then basically left nothing for anybody to rent, or very little for somebody to rent, let me say it that way. And uh and, you know, they were doing their job, nothing wrong with that. But it didn't allow us to achieve the goals that we had said, and then, in fact, more athletic, more turf fields have come up, so there's a lot of competition for rentals of that in in that case. So I don't think it's in, you know, I think it's a responsibility for what athletic director that would be the responsible athletic director to make decisions on what available time is available for rental and the charge for that matter.
So just recognizing that she will need to work with the rec.
Yes, right.
That's understood.
Absolutely, right.
Yeah, okay. Good. I like it.
Adam?
Go ahead, Adam. Yep.
Yeah, I just want to make a a quick point. Um I fully support uh Kelly being involved on the fundraising side to the extent it's reasonable and doesn't take up And doesn't interfere with her job, but I just want to be clear. I and I do not think there's any chance that we will raise all of the money needed to to keep the turf. To replace the turf when it comes time. I think that, just to be clear, there's, as Dave mentioned, there's a lot more competition for field rentals. In the area and we don't have the interest from outside groups that existed even five years ago. And I just want to state that we we need to be more aggressive with that, I agree there. But I don't want the expectation to be that we raise enough money to fully cover the cost or replace the field, because I just don't see that happening. So I just want to be be clear about that.
Okay, thank you, Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, I. One and a half comments, two comments. So I'm. Adam may have asked the question of of the candidates for the athletic director and we may have got an affirmative answer. From the person we hired, but I'm pretty sure that fundraising is not a natural skill for someone who's qualified to be a high school athletic director. And while the spirit may be willing to take a run at it. And I don't know what happened with with Dan and the the idea about golf tournaments, whatever, I think the reality of the job. And and the skill set that that a normal athletic director arrives with may prevent. Good intentions from achieving the goal we desire. So that that's that, I I wonder if in the future. I don't want to say that we're gonna lose our athletic director because she's only been on the job for a month and a half, but. We roll through athletic directors, change happens, and and if that's part of the job description, I wonder if this will limit the candidates that we will. Get in the future. And if the athletic director fails to raise sufficient funds, as Adam suggested, might happen and I believe will happen. Are we gonna fire the athletic director?
No.
Are you expecting me to answer that, Steve?
Well, what what's your intention? You said it's part of the job description and Adam, Adam is very good about holding people to their job descriptions.
Well, then that would be Adam's decision, wouldn't it?
All right.
Look, I'm not trying to advocate that we fire the athletic director or anything like that, all I'm saying is. There was a situation where nobody was responsible. And that's worse than having, you know, having that, you know, I mean, if if we could point, ten years from now, we'd point back to where the. You know, where the money was or didn't get to or whatever, how how come we didn't raise enough four hundred thousand dollars or whatever it took? You know, we need to have an understanding of what was wrong and I, you know, I think. That at this point, we had nobody that was responsible for it, nobody was even trying, it just didn't happen. Now, Dan did do some efforts, he found somebody, this is this the way I think it should happen. He found somebody that would run the golf tournaments, that had experience in doing it and wanted to do it and that kind of thing and. And, you know, and then things fell apart in that domain, it didn't work out, so. I'm not sure it was COVID or Dan leaving or what the what the exact problem was. But we had nobody to to fall back to, that's my whole point on this thing.
And I I I will agree that that, yeah, someone has to be responsible, I'm not sure the athletic director is the the best. Position for this to fall on, but.
Well, if we're being serious, really, it's kind of the board's role to do capital fundraising, right? It's not usually an administrative role, we're happy to help out where we can, but. The capital expenditure raising funds at the capital level really is more of a board function than administrative function, but again, we're happy to help. But to Steve, to your point, Steve, that's, you're right about that.
Well, at this point, I think, and we need somebody to organize and provide guidance for it, and I think that is an administrative role. And in the next motion, I offered a number of suggestions, some of them have been done there before, we've talked about them before. I just leave those as ideas, you know, for the for this thing to to enact, so. We can decide again that nobody should be responsible for this and move on. That's okay with me, I just want to make sure that we make a, we make a decision that is. That we're taking some proactive measures here, otherwise it's just gonna languish here, we're gonna ask, you know, in in years. Year ten or eleven or whatever you're gonna replace it, well, we never addressed it. And I think that's an inadequate answer.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor and seconded. We want to move this forward, do you want, do you want to keep it as exactly as worded, David?
I think the wording is fine, I mean, it was, I adapted from what you said I should. Consider.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not proposing any specific word changes, I was wondering if you wanted to to keep the motion as it, so it sounds like the answer is yes. So we can, there's no further discussion on this particular, Laura's hand is up, is it pertinent to this particular motion, Laura?
Yes, I was going to say how nice it was to have the turf field and that so many different. Sports have been able to use the stadium when previously it was reserved. And held a lot for football. And now, since we have a turf field, it's it's used and enjoyed and even the middle school has had some showcase. Games that have been been able to use it as well.
Yep, totally agree. All right, so let's do a roll call vote to see whether we want to move this motion forward or not, so I'll start with Dave.
And yes.
And Steve?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
And Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
And Laura?
Taylor, yes.
And George?
Doris, yes.
And Bronster, yes, so passes six, one, we can add it to the description, and so Adam, if you can take care of that, that'd be great. Okay. Do you have another motion, Dave, or we?
Yeah, the other motion is basically just some ideas that had come up in the past and some that I came up with. And. You know, I I wanted to collect them in one spot and propose them to the new delegate, the delegate. Who are we, wherever we're gonna delegate this to? And there, it's basically just to provide some feasibility, because there's a lot of things that I don't understand. About how the school is working at this point. When I first started working in the school, with the school board and that kind of thing, it was like station. Stadium concessions that was always, you know, handed out by the dean of students, I don't even know if the dean of students is part of that anymore, so I don't know where this goes. That's one of the problems. And then raising athletic user fees for the athletic field, we voted on that last time, but I I don't know if that's gonna happen. And I realized that, you know, at this point, there probably may not be athletics, I don't know what the stance is right now or where, how that's going. But if we do have athletics, we ought to be able, we ought to think about raising athletic fees, the user fees rather. And then the promotion of sales of commemorative bricks, we sold a lot of bricks, there's a bunch of bricks out there now, but we could keep on selling those. I know there's no reason why we should stop, we should, we should increase the price a bit. And they can commemorate anything we want to commemorate, you know, people can pay for anything, my kid was number one in the class, I want to commemorate that. My kid wasn't number one in the class, by the way. We can sell banners, a lot of, lot of, lot of schools sell banners on their, on their, on their fences, they put on the fences. And any other ideas that there are, that to fundraise, you know, golf tournaments or whatever, that that would be fine. So and and rentals, don't forget rentals, we still try to do the rentals, I'm not sure that it's a viable alternative, but we should try. And any other, any other ideas, so I I just think that, you know, it's a, I tried to capture those here, maybe they don't belong in a in a emotion. But I do think that because, you know, they they, I wanted to capture it someplace so that we could pass them on to. Or take control of this.
Yeah, so I agree, I don't think there should be a motion, because they're, I think they're good viable ideas and alternatives that need to be looked into. I would suggest that we pass that list on to Adam, who can pass it on to Mike and or the A B. And let them kind of. Figure out which ones they want to attack first and just, again, give them the options of going after them. And figuring out how that all works, so that's my suggestion.
Fair enough, you know, all I want to do is make this to move forward.
Yeah, I I agree with him. And and as a matter of fact, I think in our last meeting, we had, there was a motion for. To Adam to have to look into raising the athletic fees, user fees. So maybe if you have an update on that, Adam, so we can at least understand where we are.
Yeah, that that's actually in the consent agenda for next month for Michelle in September. For in the consent agenda about what we're doing about user fees, athletic fees.
Okay.
Collectible at this point, or how, what's gonna happen there, Adam?
Well, first we have to decide what we're doing for athletics this fall, so.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so depending on our athletic season, it will depend whether what whether we have athletic fees at all, so.
Okay, great. Is that it, Dave?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, no problem, right, so that really brings us to the non-public, there is, actually, no. Prior to that, I should say, one more time for public input, we don't have that on the agenda, but we always have two. Inputs, so. I know we've got some attendees that seem to ebb and flow. But I don't see any within particular questions at the moment. So we will. Off of the second public input and we'll move on. To non-public in in one second, and I say one second because I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting. To welcome, I I I know we've all seen and heard from both Mike and Roger multiple times over the past few months. But this is really their first official Sohegan School Board meeting, so welcome to the school and the process. And I'm sure we'll be talking lots with the both of you as we move forward in all of these endeavors that we're taking on. So, welcome and hopefully we don't invade you too much.
Kim.
Yes, Laura.
I wanted to make one comment and that was that I was disappointed we didn't have a meeting in July. And I felt like it was an important time for the Board to provide some feedback on the preliminary workings. As I I do appreciate all the work that Adam did and that the whole task force did and they did a great job bringing people together. I felt like it was an element, a piece of the puzzle, was the Board. And the high school board specifically, the implementation of the reopening plan is different than opening the other schools. And I just wanted to state that I was disappointed, we didn't have a July meeting and I tried to have one. And we didn't have four members that were interested, so. I hope we have meetings for the rest of the school year, but, you know, this was a pretty unprecedented. Situation, other boards were meeting two and three times a month since March. And I feel like it's our role as board members to. Try to oversee and be able to make a reasonable effort to. To help oversee the school, so, thank you.
Okay, so now I'll take a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Okay, and that's, is RSA correct here, Adam, RSA ninety-one, A colon three. Sub two and something in parentheses, that's not there.
C.
C, okay. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, Dave. I have a microphone problems again, huh, Steve?
Yes.
Amy? Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Doris, yes.
And Bronster, yes, all right, we are. Into going into non-public. Do we go in a separate thing or is we just kick Roger off?